May I please have a roll call, Eileen?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Ms. Rayburn?
Here.
Mr. Burkowski?
Here.
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start with public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
No, nope.
Okay, we'll talk a little. Seeing no members of the public that want to address the board, we will move to the budget hearing. Jen?
All right, thank you. This is the budget hearing. We have covered the tentative budget with the Finance and Operations Committee in much further detail. There I am. In June, as you can see, June 17th, today's the night that the board approves to adopt their budget for the 1920 school year. Between, you might ask, what have we been doing between June and now? We do monitor the budget and any of the variables that we have included. Sometimes I make adjustments before we go final, which you can see, I did make some minor adjustments in the budget that you're going to see tonight. Some years, we decide not to make any adjustments because they were immaterial. So here we are, September 24th, to adopt the final budget. That does appear in your regular agenda, so it won't be covered in the budget hearing, but will be available for action later. Want to talk a little bit about revenues, as we've covered with the Finance and Ops Committee, just to point out and illustrate to the group, property taxes by far and large are greatest revenue source. The other remaining sources are local, state, federal, and transfers, but as this chart clearly illustrates, between property taxes and other local, that is the bulk of our revenue. Talk a little bit about expenditures and taking a look at the breakdown of those. We do break those into categories. They're called objects, as defined by the state of Illinois. And you can see for District 67, 55.1% of all of our expenditures, all of our funds are in the area of salaries, another 8.9 when you add in the benefits. There are various other categories, professional services, which may include things like professional development activities, travel, professional services related to construction or architecture, all would appear in that category as well. Do you want to talk just briefly to update the board? What are those changes that I referred to that I tweaked from June? The net change is less than $5,000. So it was a little bit in revenue and a little bit in expenditures, but a net change of $4,000. The primary area on that is in the area of grants. When we put the tentative budget together in June, we did not have our final title grant allocations, so we neither didn't know our revenue, and we also did not know the approval then and the division in the expenditures. So those have all been made. Also made a couple of tweaks in the areas of security. We are beefing up the security at our entrances to all of our buildings and switching to a new system. It will be the same system that you may or may not be familiar with at the high school, so there were some adjustments on cost on that. Other than that, we made a few adjustments to benefits because more information became available on what selections on some of our open positions were. And then CPPRT is a revenue source. It's Corporate Personal Property Replacement Tax. We did find out that we're receiving more money than we had anticipated in June, so we made that adjustment as well. Again, net change of less than $4,000 to the betterment this budget as compared to the tentative budget in June. Looking at the all-fund summary, this is breaking down of those revenue categories. The same thing that would have been illustrated on the chart is at the top. You can see our property taxes in local, $34 million and $2.7 million respectively, of the total revenue of $40.69 million. The expenditures at the bottom, the same thing as that distribution that you would have seen on the previous expenditure graph. You can see 22.6 in salaries, 3.6 in employee benefits. That makes up that 55% in that other piece for benefits. 41.13 is the total expenditures for the year. Of note, the right-hand column does show you the percentage change from the prior year. So our revenue is up 13.22%. Keep in mind, that is a little bit artificially inflated because we had the early tax issue that hit in 1718 and 1819. So keep in mind, that's all not real growth. We received some of that 1819 property taxes in 1718, right? So if that was normalized, would not be that big of an increase, but it is up somewhat. Our expenditures are actually down 10.5%. In particular, if you look at the capital outlet line, you will see that's related to our construction. We had 7.7 million, then 6.9 million, and this year we have 2.9. So a large part of that reduction as well is in that particular line item. We're doing less construction than we did in the prior two years. If you wanted to take a look, just revenues straight up over expenditures, revenues of 40.6, expenditures of 41.1, so it does show a deficit spend of $441,000. To summarize on that, that is an unbalanced budget, but it was planned for due to our life, safety, capital projects, and construction. Keep in mind, the biggest project that we had on our books this year was our ADA, including both door handles, locks, and replacement and reconstruction of new ramps in several of our schools. So we knew that we were going to be deficit spending for those particular items. We still have some remaining funds, also from our 2018 capital borrow. We will be continuing to spend down those funds. The district remains above their targeted fund balance policy, which is 10%. And as we will talk about in the next few months, those of you who are interested in attending the Finance and Ops Committee meeting, the next meeting, we'll talk specifically about the five-year projection. This budget becomes our baseline for that five-year projection. That is all that I have prepared, but I'd be happy to take any questions the board may have.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions regarding the budget? So to be clear, you said this part of the meeting is the information meeting, then in our regular board meeting, we'll be taking action on this.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for September 24th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please, Eileen?
Hi.
Ms. Rayburn?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Burkowski?
Here.
Mr. Fulker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome and thanks for coming tonight. Last month, in my welcome-back-to-school remarks, I mentioned that District 67 does have a clearly stated mission, vision, and related milestones. And at that time, I promised to review that publicly sometime soon. I'd like to start that process tonight with a high-level overview of it. Then in future months, I plan to dive deeper into different areas. The District 67 vision statement begins with our mission. Why are we here? We're here to inspire and empower all students to maximize their growth as learners and develop a balanced sense of self, steadfast resiliency, and deep respect for others. So all students, growth is emphasized over simply striving for achievement, and balance is emphasized over focusing solely on academics. That is our mission. We then move on to our core values, the things that we find non-negotiable. I won't read them all, but I'll mention a few highlighted words that have extra meaning for me. Every child, incredible capacity to learn, maximizing each student's growth, actively engaged students, and world-class educators. These are not necessarily the tradition of teaching to the mean, which is the view sometimes of public education. Our mission is different. Our vision statement itself, again, a few words that jump out to me. Innovative learning community, cultivate their minds, and discover their passions. And finally, our milestones, these are the tangible things that we want to see accomplished so that we know we're on the right track. They're grouped into six categories: achievement, instruction, assessment, talent, partnership, and environment. And the administration has developed a strategic plan which goes into great detail on initiatives aimed at moving forward in each of those areas. As a board, we strive to keep this vision statement at the forefront of all major decisions we make. If we're not sure that we're focusing on the right things, we ask ourselves, how does this decision impact our achieving the vision? Does it accelerate us towards the vision? And we try to balance progress towards all six of the milestones, as all are important. A great recent example of this balancing act came a few months ago. At the end of our last fiscal year, we had a slightly larger-than-expected budget surplus. As a board, we discussed various options for what to do with this money, including simply saving it for a rainy day. Ultimately, we chose to put some of the funds towards the science lab renovations. You'll hear more about that in the coming months. And we also chose to use some of it to accelerate movement towards the vision in some of the more academic areas, targeting achievement, instruction, and assessment milestones. And we made this decision while also keeping a healthy fund balance, which we'll hear about later tonight in the Fund Balance Report. I think this example illustrates how this board and administrative team tries to work with one eye firmly on accelerating towards the vision while also being fiscally responsible. In future months, I intend to dive deeper into different areas of our vision, both explaining why different aspects are so important, as well as showcasing examples of how we are progressing towards the vision. That concludes the president's report. Superintendent's report, Mike?
So, I wanted to touch on two things. First, an expression of appreciation to the Kiwanis Foundation of Lake Bluff and Lake Forest for a donation of $6,411 to the district. What's important about this is not the large dollar amount, but the purpose of these, we're to purchase five additional AEDs across the district. This is an issue that each time the spirit or the APT at the high school does cardiopulmonary assessments of students, I think about that. AEDs likewise. I had a nephew with a heart condition that passed away and at school, and so these things are always things that are very tangible for me. So I particularly appreciate this from the Kiwanis Foundation. So, wanted to show something that Jen mentioned a few minutes ago. We've done a great deal of work across the district. Over the course of the summer, it's now completed on ramps. So we have a brand-new ramp at Sheridan. It is a significant amount of work there. We've also done a great deal of ADA work across the district, changing out doorknobs, indoor slabs, and so on and so on. And in the course of one of my building walkthroughs, I happened to come across this. So what did you do to your ankle?
Um, so...
When'd you do that?
Um, it's kind of got the kind of a long...
Good man. And how nice is it to have a ramp instead of having to take the elevator?
Uh, I want to...
Lot better? All right. Thank you, son. So, part of the reason I wanted to show this is, when you make improvements like this, just like when you make improvements in your teaching strategies, it's not good for just one student. At any point, at any point, moment in time, any student in our district could need a ramp. And this is a case, this little guy is playing soccer. He makes a play on a ball. He breaks his ankle, and the guy behind him is carrying his book, so he leaves early for class and early for lunch. So there are certain perks that go along with breaking your ankle. And so he gets to run around with a friend. But importantly, he doesn't have to go to the other side of the building to get the elevator to go down each and every time. These ramps, there are two of them on the east side. There's one on the lower floor, and there's one on the upper floor. So the entire east side is now accessible by ramp. There's a really significant amount of work that had to be done here because we had to cut into the floor. And it's not just cutting into the floor, it's cutting into the floor with an undisclosed number of things that might be down there. And so, as it turns out, everything went to plan. They're very robust ramps. They're utilized by students that may or may not have disabilities. So if you watch the traffic pattern in the school, kids are up and down this all day long. We also had to relocate a couple doors to make that work, but it worked really, really, very, very well. So the ramps across the district are already being used. I know the one at Sheridan is used on a daily basis as well. But again, making our buildings more accessible is good for every single student in the district, not just those with a specific disability at the time that we built the ramp. So with that completes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Questions or comments for our superintendent? We now move to public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move to admin reports. We have one report, the Fund Balance Report. Jen? Mike, we have the Fund Balance Report. You will give it in Jen's place.
So, we have a report policy that requires, the policy proposal in Q0 requires that the fund balance be in the range of 10 to 15%. In the event that it falls below 10%, requires a reporting to boards that recommend proactive acting. If it exceeds 15%, likewise the report detailing the rationale for the additional funds, including planned uses and timing and such. The FY '20 unordained aggregate fund balance this year was $11 million. Just over $11 million, which means nearly a 27% of fund balance of...
Of, I'm sorry, of, yeah, I've done this before. One would not know it. I'm channeling Kent, know it. Where is he when we need him? Yeah. I can do that whole thing all over again for you, Ed, but maybe at a different time. So, 27% fund balance, if we're beyond 15%, we need to present this report. As we discussed in the meeting prior to the meeting that we're currently in, we have any number of different things that we might be utilizing that for. We're going to come back to the board in the next month to detail some of those suggested improvements.
Thank you. Questions for the superintendent regarding the Fund Balance Report? Seeing none, we move on to board committee reports.
Just an hour just talking, and I think he'd ask a question of Jen if she was here. So, let me just give you my opinion of what it says, and I could be completely wrong. But the report does say we have a 27% balance roughly, which is $11 million. And it says we're going to be in deficit next year, but by $450,000. It's not enough to say we don't need a plan. But the plan is science labs and a few other things that we were finishing, furnishing stuff. So if you think of that as being about $4 million, and you take the 11 minus the 4, now we're somewhere projected to be in that range. So even though I think the report doesn't exactly say that we anticipate next year, we're going to be in the range, in part because it might depend on when we pay for science labs and things like that. But I think it is the right spirit that we have plans for the money that we're over. I believe that Jen would say that.
Correct. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Thank you. We move on to board committee reports. First up is the Board of Education Committee chaired by Suzanne.
The Board of Education Committee has not met yet. We will be meeting October 3rd at noon.
Thank you. Questions or comments for the ed committee? Move on to the board finance and ops chaired by Rob.
Finance and Ops have not met. We will meet on West Campus at 7:30 a.m. on October 15th. And as Jen alluded to, we are actually bringing on a new committee member, and we are sort of getting the five-year budget overhaul, look at it. And so, moving forward, as many people remember, we have a one-page summary of the five-year budget, and that should be pretty good from that point on.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments for Rob or the Finance and Ops Committee? Moving on to the Policy Committee chaired by Jeff.
The Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we will be having a second reading this evening on press issue 101. We don't have a scheduled meeting presently, but I'm sure there'll be another press issue shortly.
Questions or comments for Jeff regarding policy? Move to the Compensation Committee, also chaired by Jeff.
The Compensation Committee has not met since our last meeting. We were planning on meeting on September 16th. We decided to cancel that meeting upon the excellent news that District 115 has also formed a Compensation Committee and will be joining us going forward in a joint effort to address this issue. I would like to thank Mr. Burkowski for dealing with the 115 board president and getting their buy-in to form a committee and work with us. In the interim, we are hoping to meet October 3rd, which is a Friday. We're still waiting to hear on the 115 board and making sure they're available. But our hope going forward is that we'll continue to meet monthly in conjunction with 115. Rebecca Jenkins and I have already started to work on putting together a work plan, as well as what we need to do to start collecting data with regard to understanding shared service roles and how they compare to peer districts. So, we're moving forward. A little stoppage while we wait for 115 to join us, but I'm glad that they're coming aboard, and we'll be moving forward rapidly, starting this next week.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions for Jeff for the Compensation Committee? Great. We move to our liaison reports. We'll start with NSSED. Suzanne?
So, NSSED met on August 28th. Just going to highlight a couple of things from the report. NSAE did have a time change to their school day this year to better align with the home districts of the students that they serve. And so that was a bit of a transition at the beginning of the year, but it has all ironed itself out. It was an extremely well-thought-out process and plan with the needs of the students in mind and first and foremost. The big news at NSSED right now is that we are moving forward with the financial model process. And so, the work on that, the process of reimagining the financial model for NSSED going forward, has begun. All of the initial stakeholder meetings to get input on the timeline and the process as it's been laid out have happened. And now, the work will shortly begin, so I will be coming back with more material reports moving forward.
Awesome. Thank you, Suzanne. Questions or comments for Suzanne regarding NSSED? Seeing none, we move to our legislative liaison, Alice Levert. And I will comment that Alice has also taken on the role as our official IASB delegate. So we thank you for that. Alice?
Thank you. The Illinois Legislature is back in session, and I'm going to just let you know that you can refer to the details of their latest report in our minutes.
Thanks, Alice. Questions or comments regarding legislative matters? We move to the Spirit of 67 Foundation. Rich?
Thank you. The Spirit of 67 Foundation hosted its first board meeting of the school year on September 10th, 2019. The Spirit President, Kimberly Karas, gave the board a book about gratitude, which is the theme for the year. The Spirit is hosting its fall event, Stand Up for Spirit. It's a ladies' night out on October 17th at 6:30 p.m. at Omensia. This will be a night of gratitude, celebration, and laughter, as Chicago comedian Pat McGann will be featured in the event. It's a very popular event, and the tickets are actually sold out. However, there are sponsorship opportunities that can be purchased on the Spirit website, spiritof67foundation.org. Raise Your Hands for Education is an online silent auction that will be in conjunction with the Stand Up for Spirit event, and that runs from Tuesday through Friday, October 18th. And the auction has something for everyone: trips, experiences, basket, and popular school-related offerings. And finally, the donor relations team, well, the Spirit is running the Friendly Cross Town Competition again this year for participation from all the District 67 schools. First school to reach 80% family participation will receive an extra $1,000 for their school. The school that reaches the highest participation will receive a school-wide popsicle party as well. Contest results so far to date, Cherokee 55%, Everett 61%, Sheridan 64%, and DPM 52%. Overall, District 67 participation rate is around 53%. Getting to more serious things about the grant application, the deadline is actually January 30th at 3 p.m., so please try to make that deadline. All grants applications must be turned in to your school principal, and the grant day is going to be celebrated on April 22nd, 2020. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Questions or comments regarding the Spirit for Rich? Were you invited for the ladies' night out as our official liaison?
I was not. Again.
All right. Other liaison reports. Suzanne has some valuable public information to share with us.
So, should I do my APT one first? Yeah, APT exec. That's okay. No worries.
APT, Suzanne.
You just threw me. So, okay. Yeah. So the District 67 APT exec board met on Wednesday, September 11th. This year's theme is positivity. So my quote for you today is, "One small positive thought in the morning can change your whole day." My daughter wakes up to a little sign that says that every day. The presidents at each building talked about all of their welcoming activities. The two big discussions that happened were, one, that there was a new school supply vendor, and so continuing, they're going to continue to tweak that process. And also, APT membership is down this year. And so the APTs are working to reinvigorate APT membership across the district because the membership fees are the only thing that they get used as revenue for their budgets. Otherwise, they have to, their programs, some of the programs are run with Spirit grants, but otherwise, all the APT revenue comes through membership fees. So they are working on that. The next executive APT board meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 9th.
Thanks, Suzanne. Questions or comments regarding the exec APT?
Yeah, I got a quick question. And it's for both APT and Spirit, just out of curiosity.
I'm here for you.
Did the early registration, do you think, impact at all membership, people willing to pay membership for APT earlier than normal, or contributing to the Spirit?
So I will tell you what my opinion is on the APT. They are just trying to figure it out. I honestly think that it's an ongoing situation. I think it's possible that the increase in what's going on with Spirit is the decrease in what's happening with APT. Like, there's a constant confusion about why you need to do both, and that both are really important. The, I think also, in my years here, it's been, I've been around the District 67 APT for a really long time now, and it seems to me that there's a cycle on membership because the same conversation that they're having was one that I remember having when Kathy Ivan-Jack was president at Sheridan, and that was, like, Jack was in third grade, I think. So, I think it fluctuates and comes and goes. I don't think registration is the reason behind this particular thing.
I have no information on that topic.
That's fine. Just curious. Thank you.
Anything else regarding the APT? Other liaison reports?
Yes. So, I just wanted to share with everyone, this morning I was invited by a resident of Lake Bluff to attend a United Way kickoff for, United Way Lake County kickoff for a new system of service called 211. And what this is, and it exists apparently in lots of other places around the nation, it is a hub, a one-stop calling place for if you need support with any sort of social service, related to almost any type of social service. And it is also a place for people who are running nonprofits, who are offering some sort of social support, whether it has to do with education, or kids, or health, or safety. And so I just wanted to share with all of you that Lake County now has 211. And so if you're, especially here in the schools, if you're working with a family who is in need of some support, what you do is you call, and then they help you navigate where the resources might be within the county that might be able to support, given the particular struggle that the family or the person is having. I just thought it was great public information for people to know.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports, or something good for the group? We now come to our second public participation comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move to our action items. First up is the adoption of the 2019-2020 budget. May I have a motion to adopt the 2019-2020 budget as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the budget? This is the budget that our CFO, Jen Hermes, went over at our preliminary meeting. Seeing no comments or questions, could we have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Burkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 calendar as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the 2020-2021 calendar? Comments or discussion regarding the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one calendar? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the superintendent two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty compensation. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent twenty nineteen, twenty twenty compensation?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? I believe this is your salary increase that we agreed to a few months back, and it just took some time for both districts to agree. Is that correct? Yep. Any other comments or questions? May I have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue one oh one and five-year updates?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the Consent Agenda. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member. I'll now read the items on the Consent Agenda. Approval of dispersments, payrolls, and financial statements dated July and August two thousand nineteen. Approval of IMRF Authorized Agent. Approval of release of executive session minutes dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen through June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Minutes of regular meeting and workshop August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Minutes of an executive session August twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Minutes of an executive session board self-evaluation September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and disposal of audio recordings. Does any board member want to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion regarding the Consent Agenda? May I have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Englund?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?